Good evening. We'll call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order on Tuesday, November 19th at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? We have an agenda. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have some very honorable guests that are going to be approaching us and coming up to join us and actually lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Whenever you're ready. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Item number four is public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And we do not have anybody signed up to speak right now. So we will move on to item number five, which is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. And just for a short explanation, the consent agenda is items on the agenda that we're approving that don't require council debate or there's any controversy over. And anybody can add to that definition if they would like to. Item number six, discussion and possible action on the ratification of the City of Milton Police Union contract for December 31st, 2019 through December 31st, 2022. For our guests, the City of Milton and their police department negotiate a contract that involves the terms of their wages, what they're going to be paid and benefits and policies and procedures. And when we ratify a contract, it means that the city council is going to vote on whether they're going to approve this contract that's been negotiated between city staff and the police union or if they're going to vote against it. So that's what we're doing with this item. If there's anything else, anybody can stand.
Yeah, so the union, the city administration and the union administration worked together on this. This was a pretty brief process. Neither side really came to the table with any major concerns or major requests. So the process was rather smooth. The union ratified their, agreed on their contract back on November 11th. So we placed it on the agenda tonight for final ratification from the common council. You'll see I outlined kind of what I consider to be the four areas of substance in the, in the contract changes. There's always a number of clerical changes that we, that we go through almost anytime we do this. But the ones that were more substantive that deal with wages, health insurance, comp time or compensatory time and sick leave benefit accrual were the ones that I chose to highlight. Certainly, the city administration didn't have any concerns with any of those requests. And likewise, the union agreed to the city administration's requests for this three-year contract and simply looking for ratification. So this will go into effect then at the beginning of next year.
I'm assuming that anyone that had any questions contacted the city hall to ask those questions. And they were excellent about explaining any questions that I had. So I'll go ahead and recommend the city council ratify the police union contact track from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2022. Move.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further comments or any discussion by council members? All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion carries. Number seven is discussion and possible action for continuation of legal services with Kinsini Law Firm as the city's attorney.
So our contract with Kinsini Law Firm is up at the end of this year. So it's time to negotiate a new contract with Kinsini Law Firm, and we have done so. In looking back to find out when we started working with Kinsini, I think it was before records were kept. I know it hasn't been that long. But I couldn't find anything on the H drive. But it's been since before I came. And certainly during my time here, we've had a wonderful working relationship with Kinsini, specifically Mark Schrader. But also, we work with Kinsini for our municipal court as well. So there is another aspect of Kinsini Law Firm that we don't always get to see. To a certain degree, hopefully, we never see because that would mean we're in municipal court. But the contract calls for a, the retainer to be increased by 2% over the three years of the contract if paid in check or a 3% increase if paid by credit card, really, it would be the other means. And that goes for the retainer as well as any hourly rate that goes above the retainer. We feel that this is certainly appropriate and in line with other increases that we've seen throughout the budgetary process. So we are more than happy to recommend approval of the proposed legal services agreement with Kinsini Law Firm to be the city attorney from 2020 to 2022.
I'll make that motion that we approve the proposed legal service agreement with Kinsini Law Firm from 2020 to 2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. All right. Eight, discussion and possible action regarding resolution 2019-25 adopting the City of Milton 2020 annual budget.
So the resolution that is, that was in the packet that we sent out last week has since been updated. And we sent out that email this afternoon and subsequently has been since updated even since then. So that's what's in paper copy.
The resolution has changed.
That's what's in front of you here. So this resolution again is in line with the discussions that we had last week and the prior week for the budget public hearing, as well as the budget sessions that we had on November 3rd and October 15th. And I think that was all of them. So this is in line with all those conversations. What has changed, I guess, or not really changed, but what we know now compared to where we were at this time last week is that we do have the school tax credit number now from the state of Wisconsin. And we do have the first dollar credit that is also from the state of Wisconsin. So as you can see on the attachment that has been placed in front of you in the paper copy, this will, this shows what will actually appear if this budget is adopted tonight as it is. This will be the mill rate for City of Milton residents that they'll see on their tax bill come December when those are mailed out, if this is adopted at this time. So the overall tax rate in the City of Milton, again, for City of Milton residents only, it's the only thing we can speak to at this point, would see an increase of $2.51. The city's portion of that is only 32 cents. So obviously, the majority of that increase is from the school district's referendum. So of the $2.51 cent increase on the tax rate, the school districts accounts for $2 of that. So that's the large portion of the tax increase. The city's portion would only, again, only be 32 cents. And again, that's 32 cents for every $1,000 of value or $32 for every $100,000 of value.
Has anybody heard any comments from anyone since last week's meeting?
I just, concerns or comments regarding the early payoff that came in the courier? Explanation of that. And I guess I do have to agree with some of the concern about levying for early payoff of the debt. And perhaps in, I guess, when I consider it a little bit, looking at how to pay it off, perhaps we need to look a little bit at how we can pay it off or at least try to pay it off by looking at the current process of considering the contingency fund, waiting until we go through the year. And if we have money left in our contingency fund, paying part of the money that is in the, that principal or left in that amount to pay that off each year rather than levying the amount and considering it each year so that we are taking money from the taxpayers upfront. And I think it also would motivate us to be very, you know, careful about how we are spending our money throughout the year. Not in terms of, you know, leaving ice on the roads or anything, but being frugal in making those expenditures so that if we can leave money in that contingency fund to use appropriately, we can.
So just, so I understand. So with that, maybe this is a question for Dan. Like, we had some money, we did a budget amendment, and we had some money left over and we put it in capital this year. So is that something that we could use to pay off debt?
Yeah, that could be allocated towards any purpose. I think what, you know, the desire, I believe, of the council, I don't want to speak for everyone, was that, you know, we understand that $254,000 and change is, is a healthy amount that we levy for capital items. But we also recognize that the, the needs are significantly higher than 254,000. So anything we can do to, since we're in kind of a no borrowing kind of mentality, is any, any extra funds, any leftover budgeted amounts, whatever vernacular you want to use, can help fulfill some of those other needs that might not have made it into the capital budget. You know, there's a laundry list of capital assets. There's a laundry list of roads and things of that nature that total in the millions of dollars. For instance, this year, we, we used some of that, that, that extra money that revenues exceeded expenditures from 2018 to help supplement the, the seal coating that was done. Because we only took in 140,000-ish of road tax money. But just those items were 215,000. There was another 200,000 that was spent out of the general budget on Front Street and Windsor Court. And those, those expenditures came from that funding source. Had that not been allocated that way, we would have been looking at borrowing and/or Front Street and Windsor Court wouldn't have been done or the seal coating wouldn't have been done. So there's pros and cons to every decision. And, you know, that's a quick synopsis of what the dollars were used for in 2019, the year before we purchased a snowplow that wasn't budgeted. You know, next year, we'll be funding a squad car and a half, and that's about $65,000, $70,000. We've got to, we know we have to replace the elephant dumbo truck in some capacity. We, you know, staff is still exploring what that might look like. But that has a price tag of $60,000 to $190,000, depending on what we can, you know, figure out to do in the most costly-fish manner. So that's a very long answer to probably a short question.
No, I think we still have to be careful of how we levy our taxpayers. And for example, in looking at the levying, we're talking about increasing the level levy by $25,000 this first year. And if we pull, look at saving along the line during this current year, wait, coming up with saving $25,000 during the course of the, or $50,000.
No, it'd be 25,000.
$25,000. Looking at a way to, to save $25,000 during the course of the coming year that I don't know that we're preventing the projects that you're talking about by the end of 2020. If we could just try that one year to see if we're able to be frugal enough to be able to try it and meet the needs of the taxpayers as well as not levy an additional amount from them. You know, I don't know. Other people, let's hear your decision or thoughts.
I have a, a little scenario to run by, maybe. I try to break things down into something simple. If I have a family budget and I have an emergency fund of $10,000, my contingency fund, if you, if you will, right? And, but I also have long-term debt. I have a house mortgage and I owe $30,000. Well, my first inkling might be to save interest, I'm going to pull that 10 out and I'm going to put it into my home mortgage. But then I forgot, oops, halfway through the year, I had, have to replace my roof and my furnace goes out. I wish I had that 10,000. So I want to be very cautious about reducing contingency funds. Contingency funds are just that. They're there for unexpected or extra things that we want to be able to do as a council and as a city. And I'd worry about reducing that contingency fund. But that's just my take on that and my thought, so.
Dan, what does the 25,000 convert to in terms of, of the, the rate?
About seven cents on the tax rate and $7 for every 100,000 of assessed property.
You know, what I'm looking at is getting to our goal as quickly as possible. And that goal being feeling comfortable with our level of debt. And, you know, a lot has been said as we've worked toward trying to get to a point where we can say, you know, this is a debt level that is something that we can live with. We know that somewhere out there, there is a capital need for a fire station of some sort. And, you know, right now, it would be irresponsible for us to head too far down that road. I think the proposal moves us closer to that goal in a relatively responsible way. I think the seven cents per thousand is a reasonable number. I do understand the concern. And, you know, it, you know, we can, we can look at our increase and say it's pretty modest. But the taxpayer is going to be seeing a pretty good-sized bump because of the, the school referendum. So there's going to be some pain out there. And that extra seven cents may be something that is, is felt. Nevertheless, I guess I would still support moving forward with the original plan.
I would agree with, with what you said, Bill. I am, I always try to look ahead. I know that we, we will have a fire station that we'll be building at some point in time. If we can get rid of this debt approximately the same time that we might be looking at a referendum or another loan, I think it's going to be to our benefit in the long run. And I know it's going to be a couple cents more. We're all taxpayers. So we all feel, we all feel the same pain.
You were saying it wouldn't be seven cents per thousand throughout this process, correct?
What that chart was showing was just the natural scheduled decline in, in the debt service. So if you just revert back to what is always scheduled, next year, our debt service is scheduled to fall an additional 25-ish thousand. So if we keep it at that 850 level this year and, let me back up. If we keep it at the scheduled amount of 825, next year it goes down to about 800. So that 25,000, assuming all else being equal, would be a seven-cent decline if we don't add the 25,000 this year. If we just look at what is scheduled next year at about 800,000 and what is kind of proposed in this plan, it would be another 850 next year. So that's a $50,000 increase, which is 14 cents. But 850 from 820, 850 and 850 would be a zero incremental increase next year. That was just merely showing what the change would be if we only followed what was scheduled to be paid, not injecting additional monies in that four-year period.
Right now, we'd just be deciding what happens in 2020. We can be back here a year from now talking about 2021 and whether we want to repeat.
And we can map this out. I, in that model, I didn't build in any interest earnings because it'd be way too premature to do that. But if, if it's approved the way it's written, I would take the $25,000 and throw it into a CD that would mature out in four years. So, you know, I don't know what kind of rate we would get. But obviously, over the course of four years, 25,000 would grow to, I don't know, 28,000, 29,000. So we could start to look at, we could start to factor in interest earnings. So we could probably scale some of those future years down from what's just kind of shown in the model because there, there is an earnings component to it. But very difficult to predict interest rates. And, you know, if you would have told me last year that rates were going to decline this year, I would have said, you're crazy. We've had three declines. So and like Bill said, we can, you know, the model shows 50,000 next year, but maybe we just do 30. And so then that would actually be a decrease year over year of the 850, if the 850 is approved this year.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
I think my, my general comment on the debt reduction and, and the discussion I just heard, which I think is an excellent discussion, for me, it comes down to a couple of things. And certainly, I can be had either way on this, this matter. I'm not married to a certain proposal or not. I, I do agree with Bill that this is something that we could revisit on a, on a year-to-year basis. My general thought is it comes down to opportunity costs. There is a cost savings with the proposal over the life of this proposal that Dan has proposed. There is a cost savings. So there is an actual tangible, tangible physical or fiscal benefit. But it is opportunity cost as well. If we are to do this, it opens up the door for other things potentially in the future that may not be open for us if we were to not do this. If we were to take the approach that Teresa has outlined with contingency, again, it's opportunity costs. If we spend 25, if we save 20, if, if we're able to recognize a surplus of $25,000 and we set it aside for this, it just means that that $25,000 can't be used for something else, which is fine. But I would caution against that approach only from the fact that that is not a sustainable revenue source. We have been fortunate over the last few years in terms of revenues exceeding expenditures. But that, the pendulum will swing back on that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want folks to just assume, and I know you're not under this, this situation, but we have been fortunate the last couple of years. And that, that won't, won't always be the case. And that even goes for road improvements or replacing capital expenditures and things like that. We can't always rely on, on residual funds being left over at the end of the year to fund something that we know we want or know that we need. And this, this is neither, this isn't really a need, but it is, it is, does have a tangible benefit. So that's why I say it's an opportunity cost. In terms of the out years, that is a question that's been asked of me a couple of times today. And although we don't know the tax rate and we can't predict the tax rate moving into the future, we didn't even know what the tax rate for next year was going to be until about a week ago because there are so many variables that are so outside of our control that go into the creation of the tax rate. But what we do know is what the tax rate impact will be in future years. And in the memo that Dan provided last week, it basically is about a seven-cent impact annually over the life of the proposal. So seven cents this year, 14 cents next year. So that's the seven cents this year plus a seven cents next year. And then 21 cents roughly or 20 cents and some change the following year. So it's about seven cents every year. But the payoff comes when there's a 60-cent decrease in the tax rate once the debt is paid off prior to its scheduled payoff date. And a lot of it's crystal ball, but some of these are rather certain. There's some certainty that we know. We know the amount of the outstanding debt. We know what it takes to pay that off. We know when we can pay it off. We know when it's scheduled to be paid off. And it comes down to opportunity costs is what, how I visualize it. But ultimately, I think when, when it's all said and done, I certainly agree with a lot of the comments that I've heard today. Again, a $2.51 increase on the tax rate, when you say it in that way, it doesn't sound like a lot. But when you look at it as a 10% increase to the tax rate, which is what it is, there's a 10% increase to the tax rate, again, for the City of Milton residents only. So if you live in the town or the city of Janesville or Harmony, your, your tax rate will be different. Seven cents does move the needle slightly on that. But again, the $2.51 cent increase, and I'll repeat this a couple of times, the $2.51 cent increase of that $2.51, $2 of that is the school district.
80%.
And, and, and that's not, that's not a criticism of the school district. That's not anything. But there is a gigantic misconception out there in the public that everybody's tax bill is going up 25%. It's absolutely inaccurate. It's, it's just factually inaccurate. The school district's portion of the tax rate is going up 25%. That is accurate. But your overall tax bill in the City of Milton, if the budget is passed today, would, would go up $2.51. And we are 32 cents of that increase. So it's, it's tough. I get it. And, and adding seven cents to that may not sound like a lot, but when you extrapolate thousands of dollars and hundreds of thousands of dollars, Bill's right. It, it adds up. And hopefully, next year, similar to what we did last year when we decreased our tax rate 15%, the City of Milton decreased their tax rate 15% last year. Hopefully, we can do that again next year. But I don't know. We'll have to see.
Guess I'll go back to the analogy that I, I used at the last meeting, the fact that some of the borrowing that we have is paying for things that are no longer useful or that we no longer even have. And, you know, the idea of, of paying for, paying a car payment for a car you don't own anymore. You know, we're, we're a little bit in that kind of a framework. This helps us get closer to that goal. This helps us get closer to that goal of, um, um, being able to say when we're borrowing, we know we're going to get, uh, the full utility out of what we've borrowed for. Uh, and that's, I guess, what I really like about it.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate you spending your time with us. Well, you know, budgets are about values. The council is elected to, to represent the citizens and, uh, what they believe are in the best interest of the citizens. And if, if everybody feels confident, um, that this is, you know, representing everybody in their best interest, and I think the council does a pretty good job every year, then, um, you know, we've had some really thoughtful discussion. And I know, um, Linda, you wanted to make a comment too, but I really appreciate to have all the discussion and for looking at different, uh, perspectives of everyone. And I appreciate, uh, Teresa bringing up that, you know, another way to look at things. Linda?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to say that we knew that the school district's increase was gonna come back to us in one way or the other, just because, like Al said, there's a misconception out there that everybody's doing twenty-five percent. And then, and that's not the case. And I just wanna, I just wanna point out that we are, you know, we certainly are not in competition with the school district. They have their building issues, just as we had our building issues. And I feel like we have done a great job in trying to keep our services and not take out any loans. And I really think that those are the things that people are asking us to do, to get that debt paid off and not have to take out any extra loans when we don't need to. And we all know the state is pushing for us to take out loans. It's not something that, that we've decided as a council to do. So, um, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution two zero one nine dash two five.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else for anyone? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. And we have a budget. And we don't have to vote on it again correctly. We'll take a picture afterwards, though. Discussion and possible action on a facade grant for, not sure how to pronounce it.
A R K, A R A K.
A R A K Properties, Milton Area Youth Center located at two thirty-seven and three oh three Vernal Avenue.
So this is a, uh, this is not one of the residential, uh, exterior improvement program loan, uh, or grant programs. This is just the traditional facade grant program that has been around for a number of years. Care Fitters, the owner of A R A K Properties, which is twenty, or two thirty-seven and three oh three Vernal Avenue, which is the home of the Milton Area Youth Center, has requested a facade grant, uh, for exterior improvements to their facilities along Vernal Avenue. This may seem strange because, um, it's, it's, to a certain degree, it's not a business or it may not seem to be a business, but they do have a business on the property and Macy is renting from them. So, uh, this meets the, the very intent of the, uh, commercial facade grant program that was established years and years and years ago. They are located within Tith number seven. And, uh, I think it's a, it's, it's a good, uh, application and one that fits the, uh, purpose of the program. So we recommend approval of the facade improvement grant application for A R A K Properties.
I'll make a motion to approve the facade grant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything for anybody on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number four seven three, removing the through truck route designation along North John Paul Road.
So this is a situation that has probably existed for years and years and years and years. You know, Howie didn't have any recollection of it. It hasn't come up to chief before, up until this, uh, situation. The town of Milton, uh, police department brought this to our attention, that the portion of North John Paul, and again, North John Paul begins at Madison Avenue and then continues on to the old twenty-six or North Janesville Street. The portion that's within a town is not designated as a through truck route. The portion in the city still is. At some point in the history of our two municipalities, uh, that used to be County Trunk Highway Y, and that was a through truck route, probably because folks were traveling the state highway twenty-six. At some point, the town removed that as a through truck route. The city did not. So we'd like to kind of match their designation. It makes sense, there are no businesses, uh, along that route. There are multiple routes that we would prefer folks to take in a truck to get to where they would need to go if they're heading north or heading into, into Milton. And we don't wanna catch anybody by surprise. If you're driving perfectly legal, uh, in the city of Milton and you cross Sunset, next thing you know, uh, you're in the town and now it's illegal to be on that road if you're a truck and you're not making a delivery. So we just wanna match their designation and it makes perfect sense to me. When I was at the town board meeting last week, uh, we talked about this with the town board and indicated that this was on our agenda tonight and so.
We had a summary on West Sunset.
Oh.
Couple of weeks ago. We couldn't imagine what they were doing on West Sunset.
They're going to Dan Nelson's house. Oh, West Sunset, oh.
I'm on east.
Yeah.
Well, they were looking for you.
Or you. You.
They went by us. Recommend approval of ordinance four seven three, removing the through truck route designation along North John Paul Road.
So would that be to, uh, approve the first reading and waive the second, third, and adopt?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure.
Second.
Any comments or questions for anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. That motion carries.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Who knew?
Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-four, accepting the dedication of public improvements for Red Hawk Farms First Edition.
You know, if only Maxine was here, she would probably remember.
She probably would.
So, resolution two thousand nineteen twenty-four is accepting the dedication of public improvements for Red Hawk Farms First Edition. We have already accepted the improvements for their first two phases. The first edition is actually their third phase of development. And this coincides with the reduction of letter of credit that the council reviewed and approved last week or two weeks ago at their meeting. So this would be to formally turn over those public improvements, uh, to the city of Milton. Those include streets, sanitary sewer facilities, water distribution facilities, and surface water drainage facilities or stormwater facilities.
I will move for acceptance and approval of the transfer of titles.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. All right, review of October financial statements. How did the pumpkin sale go? We could use that to fundraise. I'm just saying, can't we grow pumpkins out back?
Hey, I just had a question. What's a seven hundred dollar tow bill? Just out of curiosity.
So it's the Dewey's Services, Inc., it's the first, uh...
That was a, that was an oopsie. If you notice, that's for the fire department.
Oh.
So it just got ran through the wrong checking account.
Can imagine what.
It was for an ambulance at the fire station. But we got reimbursed by the fire department.
Just seemed odd. Couldn't imagine what would cost that much to tow. All right.
This is a dumbo truck. So there's no action necessary on this, but do folks have questions?
Yeah. No.
All right, committee reports, general items. Parks and Rec met, right?
Uh, Parks and Rec met last night. They approved their twenty twenty work plan. And Dick Frye and Mike Frederick were also there to give an update on the Veterans Park Pavilion project for construction and fundraising. So they're moving right along with their winter construction. You can see the tent up and I think he said they're what, five to six blocks up for the wall?
Any other committee reports? We have the fire commission tomorrow. Anything?
And fire commission is at the town hall, right?
It's not here?
It's here?
Okay. Do you have a committee report? Are, are there any other committee reports? On anything?
Do you wanna remind people about the thing, uh, the week after Thanksgiving?
Should we move on to staff reports? All right, Ashley, go ahead for staff reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just for the, yeah, never mind.
We have our neat seat raffle going on right now. We have thirteen stools that were decorated by, um, students and teachers in the schools. So we're selling them for two dollars a ticket or ten, or, hold on, six for ten dollars. Those will go, the money raised will go towards the library. And then we have a scoopy night on Wednesday, December eighteenth. So go down there and we'll be serving you. And twenty percent of proceeds go to library.
Milton Avenue?
Milton Avenue, one, yep. December eighteenth, Wednesday, December eighteenth. We love our food fundraisers at the library.
Chief?
I'm struggling to come up with anything. Police commission tomorrow night, not much on the agenda. I think that's about the only update that I have. Things are going smoothly. People have relearned their winter driving skills, I think, so off to another season.
Howie?
Just leaves, snow, and Christmas decorations. That's about it for the next week. Hope to have them in before Thanksgiving, all the decorations.
See, they're up on the west side of town. Up and on.
Yeah, they're putting them up in the morning when it's dark out before the school traffic and then after school traffic, picking up leaves, so.
Okay. Dan, anything?
Sometime you learn December, January, you'll bring forth the budgets for the utilities and the Teds.
Inga?
Well, I went through kind of just an HR review with our liability insurance company. They have an EPL specialist that came in and just reviewed our policies. So we'll have some updates probably at the beginning of the year for the handbook.
Al?
Uh, I just wanna say thank you, uh, as always, to the staff, uh, for the budget, uh, process this year. We have a, a very good group of folks here. And, um, you know, to Teresa's comment, uh, comments about, um, you know, working throughout the year to, to save money, you know, that's, that's also one of the reasons that we're able to see some surpluses at the end of the last few years is, are those activities and the savings of, of, of equipment and reusing equipment and pushing equipment sometimes maybe too long. Like, you know, we've talked about the dumbo truck a couple of times. Thing's been around for twenty-six years. That's amazing when you consider the wear and tear and pounding that those vehicles take. I would imagine nobody in this room has a vehicle that's twenty-six years old or if they do, it's got collector's plates on it. So, yeah, I mean, I, I, we appreciate, you know, that, that you, you know, believe that, that we do that 'cause we really do and it is important. And, um, you know, I, I wanna, again, just, you know, my comments about, about the budget and the, and the tax rate, you know, mainly for, for Kim, frankly, you know, I wanna, it's important for us, uh, to understand that right, wrong, or indifferent, the city generally is the one who bears the brunt of the tax bills. And we always take calls every single year and we do our best, uh, to answer those calls. And by no means are we concerned, worried, disappointed, you know, or, or, uh, you know, glum about having to explain this year's tax bills. We will do that just like we do every other year. Um, and like I said, last year, the city's tax rate went down fifteen percent. And we still got calls. And I still read the comments on Facebook, "When are taxes ever gonna go down in Milton?" They've never gone down in Milton. Well, except for last year. But, no, so we'll, we'll take those calls and we'll do our best. And we are very happy for the school district that they're, that they're working with their, uh, through those building projects. And, uh, I certainly don't want my comments to be misconstrued, uh, in the sense that we're somehow, you know, like, "Ah, the school district's getting the two dollar increase." It's not that at all. It's just folks, taxes are difficult to understand. I, I, I get that. And had, did, had I not worked in the city government for fifteen, sixteen years, I don't know if I would understand them. But I think, you know, it's important for folks to understand that there are four overlying taxing jurisdictions that make up your tax bill. And each one of those entities, as much as we work together, have their own needs, have their own budgets, have their own capital, have their own operations. You know, last year or, or two years ago, the county had a big increase. And it's just, it's the school district's turn and that's okay. But I think it's important for folks to know that there is more that makes up your tax bill, uh, than what we just did tonight. And, uh, it's, it's an educational process that if I work in government for the next fifty years, I'll still be having the same conversation every December with folks, I'm sure. And that's okay. But, uh, I think it's just, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that that's just how it is and that's okay.
Anything else for anybody? So you're all ready for team building? Anxiously waiting, this is, this is so easy. So, we have upcoming holidays. So, the question for you tonight, and I know this is like, we can do this in five minutes or less. What is your favorite holiday food? So, I mean, there's lots of things coming up, so, but sometimes there are certain foods that we just eat at the holidays.
Alexa.
Pie of all kinds. Dinner rolls.
Homemade stuffing.
Mashed potatoes and gravy.
I guess I'll have to agree with Alexa, if it's made properly.
It's funny, I'm gonna agree with Inga. I really love pies and I don't really eat pies any other time other than this time of year. And I've got this weird, um, kick where I, I've never done this before, but I've started baking things. And, uh, I baked a lot of things over the last couple of weeks and made some pies. And, uh, you know, it's just not something, you don't like to say like, "Mmm, I want an apple pie in August," you know? So that, it's, yeah. I mean, you can, Perkins does it.
I have to say Christmas cookies. We have a special family recipe, so that's my one thing.
I'll go turkey. Only eat dinner on Thanksgiving.
Say eggnog.
I actually like all the hors d'oeuvres you have before the meal, but, but like deviled eggs is one that you usually don't get otherwise, so.
Nobody mentioned cranberry relish. I like, you know, that.
I would say my wife's, uh, sweet potato marshmallow dish. Really good.
Who's left? Me? Larry, did you go? Stuffing, all this, right, okay. You know, I'm, I'm gonna have to say Christmas cookies. It's the only time I get anything homemade. It's the only time I get anything homemade for cookies, so. They're gonna need to be nice, very specific. Hoping for some venison this year, but we'll see. Well, I had venison like two weeks ago, so I thought, well, it's not really a holiday dish, maybe? All right, that's it. Next meeting, December third, two thousand nineteen. And there is, when is the Mary Milton holiday?
Mary Milton weekend is the first Saturday, which would be December seventh. It starts out with, uh, breakfast with Santa at the high school from eight to eleven. There's the Mary Milton bonfire that will be at the community house in Goodrich Park, North Goodrich Park. That'll be from four, excuse me, four thirty to eight. And then you have the Christmas walk that will take place from eleven to seven on Sunday. And then you also will have hot dogs with Santa and games at the gathering place. So it's a weekend to stay in Milton. And let's not forget that, um, we do have some very, very nice specialty shops that can only, you can, Christmas gifts you can only get in Milton.
And Small Business Saturday is the weekend after Thanksgiving, right?
That's correct, yes.
All right.
And just so, I've had this question come up a couple of times already. Yes, we're planning on having a meeting on December third. Yes. I know we just had three in a row and December third is only two weeks away and it's right after Thanksgiving, but we know for certain we're gonna have one item on that agenda. So that, that is certainly our plan, unless, I guess it's up to you.
No, we're meeting.
December seventeenth? January seventh, but, no. Yes, the third.
Yes. So maybe we'll try to put everything on the December third agenda so we don't have to meet December seventeenth. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. See you, some of you tomorrow.